The Stratford Town Council, December 10th, 2018 is called to order. The first thing we're going to do is invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we come tonight to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. We ask that you would bless us and that you would bless our time together tonight. May we grasp those things that you want us to understand. May our hearts always be ready to respond to you and your wisdom. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
I ask everybody to stand for another second, a moment of silence for the late President George H.W. Bush, please. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from November 13th, 2018?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tiki.
A second.
A second by Mrs. Dancho. Is there any discussion about the minutes? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero. There are no ceremony presentations and awards. There's no communications. We're moving to the mayor's report. Mayor, please turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Council Chair. First, I'd like to wish Counselor Cahn a happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Bill's speaking for himself, but thank you, thank you, Counselor. We've had a busy month since we've last seen each other. We've had another mayor for the day on November 14th, which was Haley Connor. Many of us attended the Stratford-Benelle Thanksgiving Eve game. And the turkey trot also happened on Thanksgiving Day with a 5K run starting in Stratford Center. I was fortunate to be able to go to the new wing opening in Stratford High School. And it's a glorious building. We will be hosting a open house on January 9th. Approximately times will be three to seven-ish. You'll get specific notice. It's open to, it will be open to the public so the public can see the new building. Shop Small Saturday was November, Saturday, November 24th. The regional planning meeting, which we participated in, was November 27th at Sacred Heart University. We had our Holiday Tree Lighting Festival on the 28th, menorah lighting on the 3rd, and the annual Bridgeport Regional Business Council event on December 4th. On November 8th, we held a ribbon cutting at Oran Oak, not Oran Oak, it's Or and Oak, which is located in Oran Oak Plaza. The Dance Conservatory, Connecticut Dance Conservatory, had a ribbon cutting for their expansion on November 14th. That was the same day that the mayor for the day, who happens to be a student at Connecticut Dance Conservatory, helped cut the ribbon. Healthcare Advocates International, which is right, located right on Main Street, we had the ribbon cutting on Saturday, December 3rd. And the Lordship Be Kind mural was unveiled on December 7th in Lordship School. We continue to advocate for the Opportunity Zone projects through DECD and working with our regional CEOs on transportation and efficiency opportunities. We have started working on the expansion use of Elagroso Pool by adding additional swims. Counselor Cahn requested that I update you on certain projects, so if you want to just relax for a minute, I have a few pages to read to you. The Center School property, formerly known as the Center School Building, has been demolished. We will be going out for requests for qualifications for a developer in January. The Sikorsky Route 10 project, the engineer AI, confirmed that the project is scheduled to begin in the spring of 2019 and will be completed in the fall of 2019. The project will include alignment of Oran Oak Lane and the traffic flow with the Sikorsky Parking Area, improved sidewalks, signalized pedestrian crossing, and a new bus stop the GBTA has agreed to put in as a shelter as part of the project. Raymark Contract Plating, which is located on 540 Longbrook Avenue, Good Earth is clearing out. There are still some significant sized piles of mulch and natural material, but they are actively removing the product. No delay due, will be due to Good Earth. EPA and the town will continue to coordinate the cleanup activities, and EPA will build a haul road across the contract plating property, which you'll remember the town reclaimed as part of a brownfield grant. And in order to access Robestus Memorial Field, they will be putting a road over contract plating, so in essence capping it. Earthwick Activities, a barrier wall, are tentatively planned for to begin in March of 2019. And a second contractor will conduct the excavation of Raymark waste from various commercial properties. Some of the material will be taken out of town and some will be consolidated on the Robestus Memorial Ball Field, consistent with the 2016 Record of Decision. This part of the cleanup project is still out to bid, and the contractor will be selected in the spring of 2019. The Stratford Army Engine Plant. The town of Stratford has negotiated with DEEP for a 24/7 dredging of the mud flats to speed up the cleanup process from four to five years to one to one and a half years. The Army Corps of Engineers reports that the Record of Decision continues to be in May of 2019. However, the Army and PSR Point Stratford Renewal need to agree on the material disposition and utilization of land in the cleaning process. Complete Streets. So, as you remember, we received a $450,000 grant for the Complete Streets project, and $250,000 of that grant was set aside for remediation of any waste that we, contaminated waste that we found. So, in essence, we have $200,000 in funding that has been awarded to complete the technical design of the Complete Streets improvement, along with a portion of Main Street from Barnum Avenue to Harvey Place. This project was one of several identified as a high priority in the town's 2017 Complete Streets plan, and is intended to enhance access and safety for bicyclists, cyclists, yeah, there we go, pedestrians and motorists. The town has selected BSC as the engineering firm who will design the project and secure all the required permits. Upon completing the engineered design phase, the town will be positioned to begin implementing the necessary improvements. Goals for the engineered design phase include: reduce four lanes to three lanes, southbound and northbound, and a two-way center lane turn; add on-road buffered bicycle lanes; expand east and west sidewalks to a 10-foot multipath use; curb extensions with green infrastructure; and parking in Stratford Center; upgrade to high-visibility intersections, crossing, and sidewalk ramps with a warning texture; add bicycle intersection markings; add plaza space, site furnishings, and bike racks. And as I mentioned before, $250,000 of the grant has been awarded as a set aside to cover costs that have potential environmental contamination. The Exit 33 Interchange Project is scheduled for the summer and fall of 2019. $24 million allocated to various aspects of the project has, and some of which has already been expended, and that has been awarded by the federal government. The project should take from two to two and a half years. West Broad Street and Exit 32, the project is expected to start in the spring. Am I stealing your thunder, Counselor? Okay, thank you. This is part, this project has been going through public work, so I apologize if I'm taking this away from your reporting. There should be a 12-month project once it's started. The contractor is delayed right now in securing all the needed disadvantaged business enterprise subcontracts to meet his set aside goals, but they are continuing to work on it. Stratford Avenue Rotary, the town is actively working with business owners regarding the revisions of their property line. The town will resubmit the pre-design in early 2019. And I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah. You're welcome.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Mr. O'Brien.
Mayor Hoidik, any feedback on the Big Belly Trash and Recycling System?
There are several people on social media who like it a lot, and are sharing it with other members all over the place. And we have, we are on track to reduce our expenses in that line item for about $100,000.
Any other question? Mr. Kadim?
Yes, how are you, Yana? Good to see you. Good work. Question about Shakespeare Theater. Anything new on that?
We are still continuing efforts to secure the building, even though we spent a considerable amount on cleaning it up and securing it. Vandal still continue to break in often, so the police make it a frequent stop on their nightly rounds.
And is any plans going forward to try to not just secure it, but just move it along to open or close it, or do whatever we're doing with it?
So, there is interest that people who have met with me and the administration have also met with several of you offline, but as far as I know, until there's directive about, from the council as to what to do with it, we are just holding in a, we are in a holding pattern.
Okay. Because I know you're in favor of it, because, you know, this is something that's been part of the town long before I even got into town. There's so many good things I hear about it. I wish I could ever see it up and running, so that I can experience the great things that everyone else have. Also, with the Center School that was tore down, I understand that we're going out to bid to see what, like, is there any plans and planning that they hope to put there or want to put there that would benefit our town?
So, we have gone through an excessive citizen planning process. We have hosted three charrettes, and just recently with Team Stratford, we met on the front of Center School to hear what residents would like to have develop there. And all of that information will be put out when we go out for a qualified developer bid.
Are you going to have like a public forum or suggestions from the public besides that? Because I didn't, I mean, quite naturally, everything, I don't get everything, so I don't know everything. I wish I knew that you guys were meeting on that date. That's all on me, not you, because I know how to reach out to you anytime. So, it's easy to get in touch with you, and I'm glad, I'm glad of that. But is there any way to inform the public more, to have more of an input to it, other than what already occurred?
So, that will be four public hearings and public participation opportunities we've had. We probably haven't had that many even for the Plan of Conservation Development, which was required by state statute. So, and most of the feedback has been similar. So, I don't think we're going to have one more before we go out for a qualified developer. But I would expect, once the developer is selected, there will absolutely be more public sessions. I would think in line with the developer providing the township their experience and what they've done in the past, I'm sure there will be several people who'd like to go and view what the developer has actually built and put in the ground. And from there, I think the natural conversation will flow.
So, in terms of updates, since you said there already have been a few suggestions, what was one or two of the suggestions that maybe can wrap around my head?
So, the first major suggestion is housing, because it is in the transit-oriented district. And so consequently, there's an ease of pedestrian access to the train station. And so, that's one large area. Retail space, art space, music space, a black box, athletic space, park, fountain, I'm probably forgetting a few, but those are, it's pretty much a wide variety of things that people are interested in. Yep, mixed-use retail, did I say, I said retail, right? Right, okay. So, some commercial, some residential, as Counselor Cahn said, mixed-use. Some people want open space. I would not advocate for total open space, not in that location, but that's just me.
No, no, I see, I see the vision. Also, because on that block, I actually got to tour the building before they tore it down, and it was well-structured building. Quite naturally, all the different things that they said was wrong with it in terms of out-of-date asbestos and things like that. So, I understand that. But the people that live there really manicure their block, and they keep it very nice. So, I hope whatever goes there complements the community, because that would be sad for it to interrupt the joy that, and the heart and emotions that they put in that block. That's a very beautiful block. So, thank you for all the update. Take care.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? If not, I'd like to thank the mayor and move to committee reports. Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I move that the agenda be amended to add the following item, 4.3.4, Report of Parks and Rec Committee.
There's a motion on floor. Is there a second from Mr. Tiki? Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
Have you got a second?
Mr. Tiki.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, the Parks and Rec Committee has made a motion to refer to the Building Needs Committee, the Juliet Low Park project, that includes a splash park. And at some point, this will require a public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the agenda. Is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, Chair votes, yes, motion passes nine to one.
Mr. Chairman, I think you voted to add this on to the agenda. When you get to 4.3.4, you should take up the item itself and the referral to Building Needs. So, you now have it on your agenda as item 4.3.4. When you get to that space in the agenda, we can take a motion up on the report.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to go to 4.3.1, the ordinance committee.
Correct.
Is there a motion on the, first one, ordinance regarding roadside memorial markers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to discuss the ordinance regarding roadside memorial markers.
So, there's a motion from Mrs. Dancho. Is there a second from Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Pia.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Regarding the enforcement, which would be Section 3, I believe, we don't, from the way I read it, we don't have any town official or town department officially responsible for the enforcement of this. I know in ordinance, we had discussed, I believe we used the term "public safety," but I don't know if we, I don't believe we specified, would it be the Public Safety Director, would it be Public Works, would it be Stratford Police Department? And I think we need to, I'd like to have some more dialogue on that, in terms of who's exactly responsible for this.
Is there any other thoughts?
I agree with Counselor Pia that there's that question, and I think there's several other questions. We probably need to think about this a little more thoroughly.
So, I would like to take a motion to table, table this?
Motion to table.
Yeah. And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Next one, 4.3.2, Public Works Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Public Works favorable recommendation to the town council on the Tanner Brook Improvement, an amount not to exceed $25,000 to do the final as-built application for the FEMA closeout documentation to make the final flood map revision.
There's a motion on floor. Is there a second from Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion? If no discussion, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0, with the chair voting with the majority. On the Building Needs Committee, is there a motion, 4.3.3, for motion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'll make a motion for item 4.3.3 to, the Building Needs Committee held a regularly scheduled meeting on December 18th to refer the following items to the council. Turner COR 108, in the amount of $124,101 for the west partial soil disposal, and Turner COR 111, in the amount of $29,062 for the RFI 322 auditorium sound screening.
There's a motion from Mr. P. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion on this? If there's discussion, I'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Now, we'll get the town attorney's report.
Now, Mr. Chairman, you actually have item 4.3.4. There's going to be a motion made regarding the splash pad, I believe, to refer that to Building Needs.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, 4.3.4, to move to the Building Needs Committee, the Juliet Low Park project and splash pad.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion about moving to the Building Needs? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to one. Okay, now we'll go to the town attorney's report.
Attorney Ben Proto would like to address the council with respect to a proposed revision to a license agreement on behalf of his client, Northeast Horticultural.
Thank you, Mr. Proto.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mayor Hoidik, members of the council. For the record, Benjamin Proto, I'm an attorney in Stratford. I represent SLM Services, which does businesses Northeast Horticultural, which is located here in Stratford on Hathaway Drive. Earlier this year, you agreed to allow my client to utilize a small piece of property adjacent to the animal shelter. I'm sorry? Is this on?
It's on. Maybe a little closer?
Earlier this year, you had agreed to allow my client to use a small piece of property adjacent to the animal shelter on Main Street, over by the water pollution control facility, to store trees and other vegetation. SLM, Northeast Horticultural, is involved with a Department of Transportation project on the Merritt Parkway. If you've driven down the Merritt Parkway recently between Westport and Wilton, there's a great deal of work going on. They've been retained to remove all the invasive species there and to replant many, many trees, hundreds of trees and other vegetation. Not of any surprise, the Connecticut DOT project is about five to six months behind schedule. As a result, not all of the trees that were stored there this year were able to be planted. And as a result, the original lease that you had approved in May was set to expire on November 30th, although it does say November 31st, and that will be corrected if you will allow us to move forward. As a result, we're asking for the lease to be extended through next November for another year, the same, under the same terms and conditions as currently exists. It's our anticipation that this project will be completed long before the end of November of next year. And if for any reason it is not completed, additional space will be found to store any additional trees and vegetation that Northeast, Northeast Utilities, old habits. Northeast Horticultural would have to store, they would not be stored at this location. So, we're asking for an extension of this lease for a period of year that we anticipate will not run for a year. And for any reason, should Manafort Brothers fall further behind in their project, other locations will be found to store past that date. Also, just so you're aware, there was a question that came up in the original lease regarding water and water supply. We utilize a meter off of, I believe it's the local hydrant nearby, we pay for the water. The water has been turned off to our location. Obviously, there's still water to the hydrant, but for purposes of the winter months, water's not needed, so the water's been turned off. I've spoken with Mr. McCarthy about that, and he's assured that that's occurred. But there's been no billing to the town for any of the water supply. It's all been billed through to Northeast Horticultural. So, our request is to extend the lease for another period, similar to the period that we've just completed.
Are there any questions for Attorney Proto?
Yes, does it hold up anything that's already at the space? Is anything going on in terms of that?
To the best of my knowledge, no. The space was overrun with invasive vegetation species, which has been removed. Upon completion of the, of the project, Northeast Horticultural is going to return the property to a much better condition. They've removed all of the invasive species and will be returning it to a better condition than when we took it over.
Thank you.
Mr. Cahn.
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, Ben. This agreement is, were there any revisions to the current agreement in this, quote, renewal agreement?
Other than November 31st and November 30th, and the date of this new agreement, the terms are exactly the same as you approved in May.
Thank you, and maybe to the mayor or someone from the administration. Have there been any complexities or complaints regarding the use of the property?
If you remember, in the beginning, there were some concerns, but the property has been, has been self-contained. It's surrounded by a snow fence. It's orange. The trees are now upright, so it really isn't any issue. The only thing that I would ask you to look at is the payment.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion, other questions for Attorney Proto? If not...
Mr., just, well, just a quick question then. Regarding the payment, is the same, are we talking the same payment structure as before? Has that been revised, or is...
The same, the same payment.
The same payment, so the first lease was for a six-month?
Was through the end of November.
And we entered into this?
I believe in May.
So, okay, so approximately six months. So, with the same, we were, the town was compensated. Do you know, I forgot, I don't have the number offhand.
I believe it was $3,500.
Okay. So, that's the same payment structure we're getting for the next six months? Or is that going to be for the next 12 months? Here's my question. If we're renewing a six-month lease at $3,500, if you guys go eight, are they going to prorate? Is the client going to prorate a couple extra months?
The way the current, the revised leases is drafted, it's still a $3,500 payment. There was no discussion about any, any upcharge that was given to me to do. So, if an additional charge, if the council wants additional money, I'd have to go back to my client, but I don't know that that would necessarily be a problem so long as it's obviously a reasonable amount of money.
I, that's fine. I mean, I have no problem keeping it at the same $3,500 rate with the same stipulations. I guess if we go into month seven, maybe, maybe I'd feel better going at a new six-month renewal, because I know you mentioned it, you anticipate it to be done in well under a year. But I guess if it's there for an extra two or three months, would the town just get compensated, you know, a third of, 30%, of the $65?
The revision before you is through next November, so it carries forward to where we would end this year, which would take us to the end of the planting season for next year, trying to take into account the possibility that Manafort will continue to be behind, although we think that once the spring gets here, that since they'll be working throughout the winter, and we can't plant in the winter, that once the spring gets here and the planting season comes in, we'll be able to plant much, much quicker and be able to finish the project.
Okay.
So, if I'm hearing you right, this, I'm glad you brought this up, Chris, then they got $3,500 for six months, but it's going to be $3,500 for a year, the way it stands now.
That's the way it's currently written, yes.
I think that should be adjusted.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it should be adjusted after, to Chris's point, on the six-month, and instead it's triggered at another $3,500.
Or just adjust the contract for six months.
Well, the problem with six months is that would take us...
No, no.
Partially into the planting season.
Yeah, that's why I say approve for a year, but after six months, you go $3,500, it would automatically kick into his point for additional $3,500. Because you're, you're asking for one year to next year, correct? It's six months for $3,500. So, if it's going to be one year to get $3,500, on the beginning of seventh month, if you're not out, then you're paying an additional $3,500. If you're done, and Manafort delivers, then it's, it's...
Understood.
Okay.
If that's what the council wants to do, that, I will explain to my client why we're doing it that way.
Does anybody have any other thoughts on the...
I would just maybe, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, maybe just simply say, do a six-month, and then every month thereafter, the prorate amount of $583 per month forever. I have no problem if they need to be there for another 10 or 12 months. I have no problem with that, just, I guess, the compensation in line with what we've had.
We'll, we'll do it whichever way works best for the town.
Okay.
And if you want to do it on a, on a six-month, and then a month-to-month for six months, prorated on a monthly basis, I think that's a bookkeeping nightmare for you.
I was going to say, that gets complicated. That gets complicated. I, yeah, Wally, go ahead.
Just to the point, six months for $3,500, six months for $3,500, so that's just, that's the price, right? You agree with that? And just, just to keep it in the same format, so six months, six months, six months, however long ago, if you had to prorate, it's all the same, you still got to pay the same amount. So, in other words, if it's a year, $7,000, you know, so...
Understood.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want the town to use out, lose out on the space that they can do other things with, even though they beautified it, we really appreciate that. But also, it can be other uses. So, I concur with what's moving forward in terms of six months, yes, and then whatever's after, have to pay the difference. And then whatever's after, have to pay the difference.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. The illustrious attorneys here that we pay good dollars to just made a suggestion and I'll throw it out there, one year, six thousand, flat fee. And, but I think, Mr. Proto, you would still have to go back and talk to your, your client, correct? Or could you do that tonight?
I, I could, I would be able to do that in the morning.
In the morning?
And speak with Attorney Hodgson tomorrow morning.
Any thoughts on it?
If, if we can vote on it pending the, the attorney's agreement, attorney agreement with the attorney that's at hand, I mean, is, is that, I'm just asking from the lawyer, is that okay to vote on it in, in that perspective? Or we have to wait another month? Because I don't want it to.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Since you have two different ways that you are looking at doing this, might I make a suggestion that we do this for a year with the rent not to exceed seven thousand dollars? And then if we do six months for thirty-five hundred and six months for, she preferred to do that because she thinks she'll be out of there in six months, that will work. If she thinks it's going to go further than six months and you're willing to do the six thousand dollars, then we can do that.
I'm fine with that.
Did everyone follow that? Not to exceed seven thousand, but if he gets out early, it stops.
Right.
Right. It's up, it's up to seven thousand.
If we do two six months, it would be seven thousand.
Okay.
If we do one year, it would be six thousand.
The council could resolve to approve a license agreement for up to one year not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
Motion that we
We do, what, Mr.?
As, as the lawyer said.
What the lawyer said.
I'll second.
Second in from Mr. Harden?
Yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero. Thank you, Mr. Proto.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good holiday off.
Okay, now, Mrs. Dantcho.
Yes.
Let's take the lead here, please. Thank you.
Ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on six point six point one. The ordinance amending sections one five two dash two eight and one five two dash two nine of the town code regarding the designation of the dog exercise off-leash areas to be moved to ordinance.
There's a motion on the floors. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. P. is second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Mrs. Dantcho?
On six point one point two, the ordinance amending section one five two dash seven of the town code, which is amending section of the town code on the Birds Eye Street and Broad Street launching areas be moved to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
There's a motion on the floors. Is there a second? Mr. Harden, is there any discussion? If not, I'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero. Six point one point three.
Six point one point three, the ordinance amending chapter fifty-five of the town code regarding the licensing of salons and nail salons. Excuse me? Yes. Be moved to the ordinance for a public hearing.
Is there a second? Mr. Harden, is there any discussion? Here is discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
I would, just for these ordinances where there's revisions, I'd like to ask at the time of the ordinance, maybe a redlined version or at least someone who could speak to what, what the revisions were to the current ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to see if Andrea could attend the ordinance meeting to discuss that one and then to have a redlined version would be helpful.
Yes, Mrs. Dantcho, we'll make sure that for the ordinance committee, there's, the ordinances come back so that you can see what's been deleted and what's being added.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. The chair votes yes. And now, we have six point two point one. Mr. Poissons? Okay, you're going to do it? Okay, Mr. Perillo?
I'm going to make a motion regarding the resolution. Nichols, to accept the resolution of naming Nichols School Parking Lot.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to Nick, to name the Nichols School Parking Lot? Mr. Perillo, could you read it? It's unusual, but since the family, you're, read the whole thing, please.
Whereas the desirable that the town of Stratford named the parking lot at Nichols School in the memory of John Stephen Kosk, five-year-old kindergarten student who was tragically hit and killed by a car on September fourth, nineteen eighty-one, while leaving Nichols School.
Is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Mr. Tiki, is there any discussion on this? Would the family like to come forward?
On behalf of, on behalf of, on behalf of my entire family, I would like to thank the town council and the mayor for honoring the memory of our son, John Stephen Kosk. Although his accident happened thirty-seven years ago, it still feels like it happened yesterday. This memorial can be a constant reminder to the parents of Nichols School and the residents of our community to always drive carefully and be aware of your surroundings. The lives of all our children depend on it. Thank you again. We appreciate that after all these years, our son has not been forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you and condolences to your family. Okay, I'd like to call the, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Six point two point two for the library. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion. Six point two point two, the resolution regarding architectural services for interior renovations of the Stratford Library.
There's a motion from Mrs. Dantcho. Mr. Tiki, is there any discussion? If not, I'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Six point two point three, Booth Park Clock.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to move that the agenda be amended to add the following items. Six point two points three, the resolution regarding the contract for the repair of the Booth Park Clock Tower.
Okay, there was, there's a resolution on the floor. Is there a second? Mr. Harden is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor amending?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So, the original form you sent me, you don't have six point two point three on there?
Wally, we're adding.
Councilman Kadeen, there's a motion.
No, I'm just saying, okay, because I'm just making sure.
You're right. We're adding it right now.
Because it was one sitting there. I didn't want to make sure I didn't overlook it.
No, no.
Thank you.
You're just voting to add this item to the agenda. Someone will then make the resolution in a moment.
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call, vote. All in favor adding this to the agenda, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Okay, now, Mr. Pia?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move as follows, that it be resolved that the contract for the repair of the Booth Park Clock Tower in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents be awarded to Valley Restoration LLC and that the mayor be authorized to enter into a contract for such informed satisfactory to the town attorney.
There's a motion on, a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Mrs. Dantcho. Before we get started, I, I'm going to jump ahead here. The reason why we're doing this, we, and, and I actually, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor because last week, so she can explain why this happened, okay?
So, so as you know, that the, there are several buildings at Booth Park that are in need of repair because in the capital improvement plan, you budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for those repairs. And one of the most critical is the Booth Park Clock Tower. When I say it fast, I mix up the words, so that's why I was speaking slowly. Virginia Harris, who is the president of the Friends of Booth and many of the members, and Dan Wakeling, Supervisor of Buildings, and Mo McCarthy have identified that this is something that we really need to address as quickly as possible. So, with the engineer that they had hired, they worked with our, our new purchasing agent and put out a bid for the repair. And this bid, they opened the bid documents, I believe, on Friday. And so, it was after the agenda had passed, but because it's critical, we wanted to get, we want, are thankful that, one, you amended the agenda and, two, that you're hearing this so we can address this repair and they can get this going by the springtime.
Okay, that's to clarify things. Again, this short notice, that's the reason for it. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on this? Any feelings?
I just have a quick question. Does this include roof repair or is the roof not needed a repair? Or is this just the mechanism?
This is the supports and some of the repair and would you, Brian, Brian Snyder here is the architect who managed this for us. So, this is very helpful and your timing is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, my name is Brian Snyder. I'm an architect. I'm the one who prepared the bid documents for the repair. This specific scope of work that's on the table addresses some beams that have all rotted out that are just above the top roof, right below the bells. So, you have to bring in a crane, a rigger. That whole top portion and the bells has to be brought down to grade on a leveled platform, those beams replaced. And I believe Mr. McCarthy is working with New England Masonry on a separate contract to replace the roof. Because if we're going to go to the effort to remove the cupola, put it on the ground, the intent was to replace the roof also, but the roof replacement is not included in this. This is just, Valley Restoration is referred to as a steeplejack. They specialize in church steeples, towers, cupolas, this sort of work. It just includes replacing the rotted beams up top.
Is there any other questions for Brian while he's here?
Yes. After they do that, is there any more extensive work that need to be done to the exact building? And is this, is this price compatible with other contractors?
They were the low bid contractor and the, the limitations of the scope of work in that contract is to replace those beams, all the rigging and the crane work. It also includes replacing the front clock dial, which has a bullet hole in it. So, it's going to replace the clock dial. I think it's going to put some L E D lights around the outside. That is it.
In, in terms of that, do you also get like a year warranty, two-year, ten-year, five-year? How does that work? Is it just?
There's a two-year labor and material warranty that's written into the contract. But, yeah, this is replacing timbers and such, so it most likely will not be needed. But it's written in as boiler plate.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So, are there any other questions? Mr. Khan?
Thank you. There's a, Margot left us a, a bid packet which contained the different vendors that wanted to do this job and how Valley was selected. And in the back is a purchase order for a roof. Are we proceeding with the roof separately or, well, the roof needs to be done. Is it already been accomplished? Like, we've already ordered the roof so it can be done in conjunction with the tower being on the ground? Is that a question for Public Works?
My understanding is that New England Masonry and Roofing has a state contract. They're on the D A S bid list. And so, that pricing was secured by Public Works from New England Masonry. How it's procured, I'm not sure, but it is, that roof is not, the roof work is not included in the thirty-six thousand dollar bid.
Yep.
That's separate.
Okay, hopefully, they can be done together.
Yeah, the intent, and, and there's language in the, in the Valley Restoration contract for the structural repairs that, and they were made aware. The cupola's to be, and the bells is to be removed. And there will be a one-to-two-week period where they can't work so that New England Masonry can replace the roof. And then they can come back and do the beam work and replace the cupola. So, it's written in the contract that they have to coordinate with, with each other and there will be a gap that, so the roof can be replaced. My pleasure.
So, just, just to be clear about this, so are we going to vote on both things so it can all go through at the same time, so we're not standing here waiting and waiting and voting? If it's going to be done, just do it all at one time? Would that be okay?
I'm, I'm looking to the attorneys. I think it's
That's what I'm looking, I'm looking.
Oh, okay. Mr. Timonak, can you come forward?
Good evening, everybody. You're just voting on the one bid, the thirty-six thousand dollar bid tonight. And I'm going to take, I would say, vote on that. I'm going to ask Brian some questions, then after the meeting, I'll clarify what the, this roof document is for everybody, if there are any further questions on that.
Is that satisfactory? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, let's call it vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero. In new business, there's a motion to revise the fee for the constable. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion for seven point one to be resolved on an increase in the fee for the pony delivery by a constable from seventy-five dollars to one hundred dollars, being as hereby approved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add
Yep.
the gentleman does, does an amazing job and I'd like to thank Mr. Frank Belacqua. And I know all of us appreciate his work because it really makes our weekend a lot more neat and organized and preparation, so it's well deserved.
And, and I know he's very flexible because sometimes we can't get the ponies out in time for extenuating circumstances, looking at the attorneys. So, yes, I agree. Frank has done a good job. All right, if there's no other que, no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero. Okay, I'm going to go down to seven point two point two, Parks and Recs.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Walter Guy Stelmec as the alternate member of the Parks Recreation Committee to replace the seat of Drew Bonnington, who was moved to a full member December two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadeen. Is there any discussion? If I'm just clarifying, this was the gentleman that was a primary person requesting to go to a, to alternate.
Yes, he formerly was a regular member. He requested to step down and to become an alternate.
Okay. All right, if not, no other questions. We'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero with the chair voting with the majority. Longbrook Park Commission. Is there something?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Amy Wilsey of Allendale being as hereby appointed member of the Longbrook Park Commission to the seat of John Miriam, who resigned, whose term expired November sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second? Mr. Perillo, second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes ten zero. Unless somebody has anything else, we're moving to the big one. Anybody motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Perillo, second by Mr. Kadeem.
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.